We're starting. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. The North Ridgeville City Council meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. If you could please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Father, we gather here with gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask for your guidance as we make decisions this evening. Grant us the wisdom to lead with compassion, courage, and understanding. And may we always strive to be stewards of the trust placed in us. In your name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Avens.
Here.
Winkle.
Here.
Awig.
Here.
De Vries. Excused. Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Law Director.
Here.
Engineer. Finance Director. Clerk of Council, here. Okay, under the approval of minutes tonight, we have several meeting minutes on the agenda. First are the public hearing meeting minutes dated February 3rd, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved as originally submitted. Next, we have public hearing meeting minutes also dated February 3rd, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections to those? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Now, we have the regular city council meeting minutes dated February 3rd, 2025. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved as well. And lastly, the special city council meeting minutes dated February 4th, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections? Okay, hearing none, those minutes stand approved as well. That brings us to our lobby session. The lobby session is the portion of our meeting in which the public is allowed an opportunity to address county council as well as the administration. Anybody wishing to speak this evening, we do ask that you speak from the podium and from the podium only, please. Those intending to speak, I will ask you to begin by stating your name and address for the record, at which time you will be allowed up to three minutes to speak regarding matters related to this business, the city council, or the general affairs of the city of North Ridgeville. In the interest of time, the lobby session is not intended to be an interactive question and answer session, but nonetheless, as always, we welcome and appreciate your input, and depending on the nature of your comments, a council member or member of the administration may follow up with you. So at this time, the lobby session is now open. Is there anybody in attendance this evening who wishes to address council? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to administrators' reports, and up first is Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's several items on the agenda that I'll speak to as they come up. But I did want to point out that on February 25th at 6:00 PM over at the academic center, it is time for the State of North Ridgeville, which is the joint address by the superintendent and me to the community, to letting everybody know what the progress and happenings are at the city and schools. So we're going to do that in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. They ask for an RSVP if you're going to attend. I believe there might be some things to drink and eat, so they're trying to make sure they have enough. But it's always a good time, and we'll try not to keep you there all night long. That concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. ODOT's contractor, Great Lakes Construction, will begin working on the bridge deck for the State Route 83 Bridge over State Route 10. They are expected to implement their temporary traffic signal system next Monday, February 24th, so that only one lane of traffic will be maintained over the bridge with the signals in place, and that will operate through mid-November. Ridgeville Farms will be installing sanitary sewer along State Route 83 in the upcoming weeks. You can expect some additional delays along 83 with this work as well. Engineering is proposing ordinance 2025-35 on the readings today. The ordinance is for the construction of roadway resurfacing of Caroline, Luanne, and Monica Drive. This project includes a community development block grant from the county in the amount of $150,000. Work is anticipated to start early this summer. Engineering continues to push private utilities to complete their relocations at the State Route 83 and Chestnut Ridge intersection so that we might start construction this summer for the roundabout, not going on on State Route 83. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Finance.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And note that council has also received the January 2025 Water Distribution and EPA Report, the 2024 End-of-Year EPA Report, as well as the January 2025 Building Department Report. I think that brings us to recess.
Mr. President, move the dispense with recess.
Second.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by Awig to dispense with recess this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Okay, recess has been dispensed. We'll move on to first readings. Actually, before we begin, oh, scratch that. 2025-16.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew an agreement with the North Ridgeville City School District relating to the tax revenue affected by tax abatement agreements, which promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city and the school district.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
This is an agreement that we enter into with the schools each, every five years. Similar to our levies that are now on the ballot for the May primary, we're looking to renew this agreement with the schools. And if you remember, as projects come into the city, we have a review of those projects, and we look at trying to make sure that the schools stay whole in the process if we're offering abatements. And so that, that's the purpose of this agreement. So I should have made the motion to dispense with the second and third readings first, before I went into that long explanation. But I'm doing so now.
I move to dispense with the second and third readings for this ordinance.
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Swank to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-16. Are there any comments or questions at this time?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Winkle.
In Provision 1, do we have to adjust that date, or is the January 1st, 2020 accurate?
We do have to amend. So if you'd like to make a motion to change that to January 1st of 2025, that would be great.
I'd like to make a motion to amend by substitution, Provision 1, to state January 1st, 2025 instead of January 1st, 2020, as it's written.
Second.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by Awig to amend 2025-16, updating the date to January 1st, 2025. Are there any questions or further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
For the enlightenment of all the folks watching out there, could you give some, could somebody give some examples of the businesses that will be affected by this?
I can do that, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
So there's been several over the years. You know, whenever we give a tax abatement to a company, we then review that abatement, look at what the schools would be missing out on because of the abatement, and then we enter into a revenue sharing agreement with the city to share its income taxes with the schools. And we usually also ask the business to make a direct donation to the schools. So for example, Roof, which is the German company that's building a facility over there on Taylor Woods Industrial Parkway, they got an abatement. We took a look at what they were asking for, and we worked out an arrangement where we got the schools back to pretty much where they would have been had the abatement not been given. But we do that on a case-by-case basis. So, I mean, I know there's several over the years that we've done this with, but we don't know which businesses it might be in the future until we have those conversations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional questions? So again, the motion was made by Winkle and seconded by Awig to amend 2025-16, updating the date. Clerk, please call the roll. Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-16 has been amended. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swank to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-16 amended. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, I'd like to just point out the process in which this happens. Once we pass our ordinance, it goes over to the schools for the school board to review, and they have to do their part and pass it through their legislative process. So, you know, this agreement is effective January 1st of 2025. Just like to move this along as quickly as possible, but I will not ask for the emergency clause.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any additional comments or questions? On the motion to dispense with second and third readings for 2025-16, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Swank to adopt 2025-16. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries six nothing, and 2025-16 amended has been adopted. 2025-32.
An ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council 2025 Energize Community Grants.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-32. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Ms. Awig.
Yeah, what is the grant amount and what will the money be used for?
Through the chair, the grant amount is for $81,229, and the funding will be used towards the Chestnut and 83 Roundabout.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reason being that we are looking to accept this money, and we can't move forward and receive the money until we accept it.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2025-32 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was then moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-32 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-32 has been adopted. 2025-33.
A resolution authorizing the Director of Planning and Development to make application on behalf of the city of North Ridgeville for funding from Ohio ODOT's Highway Safety Improvement Program for the Bainbridge Road and Root Road Roundabout, further authorizing funds for the local match, further authorizing the mayor to accept the funding if awarded, and to execute a contract with the state of Ohio.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Swank to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-33. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, as I'm sure you all realize, living in the city, that intersection is a strange one, given the bend coming from Root Road north to that intersection. It does make it difficult for people to see traffic coming when you're turning left onto Bainbridge, coming from the south on route. And so we've had a lot of accidents in that area. It causes quite a bit of buildup there as well, with only a tiny bit of room to squeeze by somebody, and there's been many times people have tried to squeeze by there and not made it, you know, when somebody's making a turn. So I think it's a priority spot for us. We have already had conversations with ODOT. They're willing to fund the project, you know, in a big way. So we're looking to move forward with it and move this resolution along tonight, but will not need the emergency clause.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swank.
If I can ask the administration, is it going to be enough property there, or are they going to have to buy up one of those houses? I know they'll have to probably take some property, but...
Yeah, there's enough property there that we will not need to buy any houses, but we will need to acquire some property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional comments or questions? So again, the motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Swank to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-33. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swank to adopt 2025-33. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-33 has been adopted. 2025-34.
A resolution authorizing the donation of 13 footballs to the North Ridgeville Middle School Football Program.
Mr. President, move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-34. Are there any comments or questions?
To the chair, I have a question. When does football season start?
When does football season start? For the middle school in the summertime?
Mr. President, I could probably add to that. There's offseason training throughout the year, about once a week, where there'll be a combination of lifting and indoor practice, and then it starts in full swing in June.
Thank you, Mr. Winkle.
Do we need the emergency clause?
We do not.
Are there any additional comments or questions? So again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-34. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Abstain.
Clerk, please call the roll. Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Abstain.
Awig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
A motion carries with five yes, zero no, and one abstention.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-34. Are there any comments or questions at this time?
Yeah, Mr. President, we have these footballs that don't serve a municipal purpose for our program, and the middle school could use them, so we figured, why not put them to some good use?
Yeah, I think they were the wrong size. Is that what the...
I believe so, yes.
Can't be used in the parkson rec, but could be used by the middle school. Okay. Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Abstain.
Awig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-34 has been adopted. 2025-35.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract according to law in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder for the roadway resurfacing of Caroline Drive, Luanne Drive, and Monica Drive and other pertinences.
Is there a time limit? Is there a deadline for this one, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, we have decided that we're going to wait at least another meeting.
Okay. Move on to 2025-36.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract according to law in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder for the Root Road Parking Lot Improvement Project.
And similarly, we're going to wait as well.
2025-37.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a delinquent debt collection agreement with the Ohio Attorney General pursuant to RC 131.02 for the collection of delinquent debts owed to the city.
2025-38.
A resolution to approve the application made by Andrew A. Rack to have certain land owned by them designated as being located within an agricultural district.
2025-39.
A resolution to approve the application made by Woodside, Constantine, and Trustee to have certain land owned by them designated as being located within an agricultural district.
That'll do it for first readings. We'll move on to second readings. And up first is 2025-11.
A resolution to approve the application made by William Schrauff to have certain land owned by him, which has been designated as an agricultural district by the county auditor.
Mr. President, move to dispense with the third reading.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the third reading for 2025-11. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. ...
I have a question.
Go ahead. You can ask a question first.
Why?
Why what?
Why are we dispensing with the third reading?
I was actually going to say that.
Mr. Mayor?
So when, when applications come in, we have 30 days to hold a hearing. And then, once we have the hearing, we have 30 days to approve, modify, or reject the application. So 30 days would bring us to approximately March, whatever it is, the beginning of March. And I wasn't exactly looking at the calendar, but I assumed that our, it's pretty much right on point. We could wait until the next meeting, but that's too close to the 30-day time window. So there's no reason why we shouldn't just pass it tonight and avoid that potential conflict.
Are there any additional...
And that same reasoning, sorry, would also apply to the next one as well.
Are there any additional comments or questions? So again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the third reading for 2025-11. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-11. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-11 has been adopted. 2025-12.
A resolution to approve the application made by Jeff Schweitzer to have certain land owned by him, which has been designated as an agricultural district by the county auditor.
Mr. President, move to dispense with the third reading.
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the third reading for 2025-12. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-12. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-12 has been adopted. 2025-14.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for a 12-month period according to law in a manner prescribed by law for the purchase of chemicals to be used by the French Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant.
2025-15.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to continue the use of peaking water meter reading software in accordance with the consumption from the Badger Meter Incorporated as part of the mass water meter replacement project.
2025-17.
An ordinance repealing the North Ridgeville Codified Ordinance, Chapter 268, Block Grant Grievance Board.
2025-19.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to purchase two 1-ton Ford F-550 dump trucks with plows and salt spreaders and accessories for the Public Works Department through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services or the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchase Program, or to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with an outside vendor according to law in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidders.
2025, excuse me, 2025-20.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to purchase a 2025 Ford F-350 four-by-four utility body pickup truck and accessories for the Public Works Department through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services or the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchase Program, or to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with an outside vendor according to law in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidders.
2025-21.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville or his designee to purchase a Case 621G XR reel loader and accessories for the Public Works Department through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services or the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchase Program, or to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with an outside vendor according to law in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidders.
2025-22.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to purchase a 2025 HV 507 SFA international dump truck with plow and salt spreader for the Public Works Department through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services or the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchase Program, or to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with an outside vendor according to law in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder.
2025-24.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to purchase a 2025 HV 507 SFA international dump truck and accessories for the Public Works Department through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services or the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchase or the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchase Program, or to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with an outside vendor according to law and in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidders.
Twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-five.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to purchase auxiliary equipment through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services or the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchase Programs for two new international seventy-four hundred chassis vehicles purchased by the city last year, or to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with an outside vendor according to law and a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidders.
That'll bring us to third readings. Twenty-twenty-five dash three.
A resolution adopting Vision Zero and the Lorraine County Comprehensive Safety Action Plan.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swank.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Winkle to adopt twenty-twenty-four dash three. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
This is an effort to improve safety in and around us. You know, we are part of a county, and we are not in this fight alone. So this is an opportunity for us to work with our neighbors and try to improve safety, not only in North Ridgeville, but throughout the county. So it's a worthy cause.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any additional comments or questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swank.
If I can ask the mayor, do we need to pass an emergency on this?
We do not.
Okay.
Any additional comments or questions? So again, it was moved by Swank, seconded by Winkle, to adopt twenty-twenty-four dash three. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
A. Wig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries, and twenty-twenty-five dash three has been adopted.
Twenty-twenty-five dash four.
A resolution to approve the application made by Frank and Donna Kripka and F. C. A. Kids Farm L. L. C. to have certain land owned by them designated as being located within an agricultural district.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swank.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Winkle to adopt twenty-twenty-four dash four. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
A. Wig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries, and twenty-twenty-five dash four has been adopted.
Twenty-twenty-five dash five.
An ordinance amending the North Ridgeville Codified Ordinance, Chapter ten sixty-four point oh-two, multi-service center and to dissolve the multipurpose room, Board of Trustees.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swank.
Move to adopt. Second.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by A. Wig to adopt twenty-twenty-five dash five. Are there any comments or questions?
To the chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Schaefer.
Why are we doing this? What is the benefit?
What is the benefit of dissolving?
Yes.
Well, I don't believe the Board of Trustees is in existence. There has been for quite some time now.
It's a formality.
It's a formality, yeah. Are there any additional comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swank.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.